Restaurant and residence as well as a pad, that is not the house itself, the building itself is a pad. A pad for seasonal ice skating rink and skateboard park on 4.9 acres out of 59.2 acres tax map. April 4, Lot 5 on the Bangor Road in the rural zone. There's someone representing the applicant.
Andrew McCullough representing the applicant. First thing, before I try to give you a little bit of summary, one thing that I didn't notice and that Michelle noted in the TRT report. And then I just, to be, just to be clear, when we were typing up this application, we were using as a reference the original application that Jay and Kathy had prepared and brought to you about three years ago or so. And so we made a typo and listed on, under development information, that motocross track, and there is no motocross track proposed in this application. So just to kind of clarify that. Again, the plan is to construct actually two buildings on the property. The primary building is going to be this 3,200 square foot building that will be used. And the square footage is plus or minus a little bit, but approximately 3,200 square foot building. Approximately 2,000 square feet of it will be used as restaurant. The remainder will be used as their residence. They intend to live there. There will be a separate outbuilding that we've shown as a garage down on the back of the site or further back behind the restaurant building. We have shown on here a 100 by 200 square foot, or 100 foot by 200 foot pad, if you will, for a seasonal ice skating rink. In the stormwater calculations, we've assumed that that pad is impervious. So we've assumed a worst-case scenario in our stormwater management plan. That may ultimately be vegetated, but we're going to stick with the worst-case scenario, that it's just a hard surface. We also are proposing approximately an 80-foot by 120-foot area that would be a concrete pad that would be for a skateboard park area. The facility is going to have its own subsurface wastewater disposal system or septic system. The facility will be served by private water, their own well. The, as noted, and I believe it is noted on my site plan, that the well will be considered a public water supply. It's called technically a transient public water supply because there are different individuals using it because it's a restaurant. The main department of transportation has issued an entrance permit for the two entrances that we've proposed at the facility. The wetlands were delineated by SW Coal Engineering. And as I've noted, less than one-tenth of an acre of wetlands, of forested freshwater wetlands will be impacted by the proposed development. So no NERPA permit is required. One thing as it relates to the TRT report, or Michelle noted that SW Coal had recommended in their report that U.S. Fish and Wildlife be contacted. I haven't contacted them at this time. I will, frankly, in looking at it, because we're not in or near a stream channel which is Atlantic salmon habitat, I hadn't addressed that, but I will send them a letter or send them a plan and send them an email and get a comment from them. The, as far as stormwater, we've proposed, I think it's four underdrained soil filters to treat the stormwater. And we've done that to try to break the site into discrete areas and treat those areas near where the stormwater is being generated, which is an LID practice like we're trying to focus on. The... By using those underdrained soil filters, again, we get the cooling of the water. We get the removal of heavy sediments at least. We also, by removing heavy sediments, we, it is also a measure that is used to treat phosphorus. And so in the stormwater calculations, I have included a phosphorus calculations. Quite frankly, because it's such a large site, we're not, even with this amount of development that we have here, we technically are exporting within the limits without any treatment. But we are providing treatment so that our phosphorus export is way, way below what is permitted to be exported. The... In general terms on the site plan, we have shown areas where dumpster is proposed, where LP tanks are proposed. We have shown an excess of parking over what I've at least calculated and based on certain assumptions have come up with what is needed. I believe I calculated between some, based on some assumptions because of the ice skate park and the skateboard park not being, fitting into a good use. Made some assumptions on those with the restaurant. Came up to 48 required, provided 72 at this point on the plan. One thing that is highlighted in the TRT report and that I will review with my pen again is the fact that there may be a couple of radiuses that are too tight. And so there might be a couple of spaces that need to be lost or radiuses that need to be adjusted so that the trucks have adequate turning movements. The emergency vehicle trucks. The... Because the facility will offer live entertainment at times inside the facility, it triggers the need for a full sprinkler system based on the rules that State Fire Marshal's office has adopted. So a full sprinkler system with a tank and a pump will be required in order to sprinkler the building. The... I've tried to describe the building, but final design of the building is, has been a little bit fluid at this point. I mean, it fits within or in the range of what I've described, but as far as the square footage might change a little bit and the locations of all the access or egress areas, I don't have quite yet. And so in our lighting plan, I had included a fixture that would be at those doorway locations that meets the standard of four or five-foot candles. But I haven't been able to show those doorway locations yet and those light fixture locations. The other thing that, quite frankly, just came in today because of people being on vacation was the exterior lighting plan. We had a lighting plan, but as we worked our way through the site plan and the stormwater and all these other things, the site plan changed a little bit. And so we needed to have that updated and quite honestly, it just came in late this afternoon. I do have it for you. I can give it to you. I apologize. They're 11 by 17s and so I have an overhaul. And then I have two blowups that show all the numbers. And it is a lighting plan that does conform to the city's standard. It goes a little bit further because we've showed some potential lighting for these outdoor areas that may or may not actually be installed.
Do you have a copy for me? Roger, did you get a copy?
Yeah.
Michelle, before we proceed further, did we, why do we not have a sketch plan review?
Why do you want a sketch plan for what?
Why do we not have the sketch plan review?
Of what?
This project.
There should be a sketch plan, right?
Well, is this meeting then the sketch plan review?
Oh, sketch plan. They don't have to come to sketch plan. It's a, it's not mandatory. Sorry. I'm sorry, just like a sketch.
No, no, no.
Sorry about that. Switch to your copy.
Have you finished? No.
Well, I've lost my train of thought, so I guess I would say that probably it's better off for me to shut up.
Then it's okay if we just turn it down.
I prefer that you didn't just do that, but...
Well, I just thought we could wrap it up real quick.
Well, I just didn't wrap it up real quick, but...
Not in that direction.
Not in that direction necessarily.
All right. That means we have to actually do some work.
Well, kind of.
Are there any questions for the applicant?
Yes, Amy. Entertainment, that's all going to be in restaurants, it's going to not be outdoors.
Correct. And there's a note to that effect, I believe, on the plan.
I looked at it and see. But I think it would.
Yeah.
And the skating park, if the ice skating rink is going to be open, I mean, there's going to be no, you know.
Correct. They're just, they're just open air. Right.
And the skaters are not to be considered entertainment?
No, no. It's not Las Vegas.
Is there a subsurface wastewater application?
There is an HHE200 for, and, plan in the book.
I missed it. Okay.
They, the design flow I reviewed with Jim Jacobson as well as Dwight. It comes in at 1,950 or so gallons per day, just under engineered system criteria.
That was the next question.
Yeah. And so we've cited it, we've laid it out so that, again, the system is greater than 300 feet from where the well is proposed. And we've used a restaurant factor with some adjustments and taken that into account.
If I just, while we mentioned the well finally, the note is not on the plan regarding it being a public well?
Yeah, it is.
Being a public well.
That's a public water supply, number two?
It's on the note?
SB1.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And the interest of that is because that's a different distance in that one. Perfect. Thank you.
Because it's public, we'll have to test it more?
They will, they will, yes, yes. I mean, there's, there's, and I mean, I haven't really gone into it in this application, but you know, there's a separate application and approval process through the state for that. Yep. And I actually reviewed that with Jay the other day.
And there was a existing, there is an existing well?
There is, according to, and I haven't sounded it out, according to what I can find, that it's supposedly dry. But, and there isn't, I mean, at this point, an abandoned septic system there also. We've shown those approximate locations on the plan. And the rules permit that material removed in the excavation of an old system may be used on-site for beneficial uses. So, I mean, ultimately that will be used in a fill somewhere.
What about the abandoned building, Michelle?
That shack on the road, it's going to get knocked over.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If your comments can come to the podium so we can inform you.
Yes, please, when you're answering, come up so we can get it on the tape.
So yes, the abandoned building will be demolished.
Other questions?
I don't see any, wouldn't it, tell me if I'm out of bounds, but with the ice skating rinks as far as outdoor bathroom, is there, do we need to address that as far as the planning board? Like portability kind of thing or?
We have included in the design flow some, an assumption that they may use the bathrooms inside.
In the restaurant?
Yes. Yep.
I don't know if I'm outside of the scope of the board or not.
No, no, I mean, I mean, it's a legitimate or logical question. Yep.
So they will skate from the rink into the restrooms?
At, at times they might.
Good answer.
In the skateboard area.
Yeah.
That's more or less, I suppose.
Can, can you describe more about the 100-foot buffer and where on that large lot that might be required? Is that way down?
There's a, there's a stream toward the back of the lot. I mean, you know, this lot, again, at 59.2 acres, it, I think it's something like 3,000 feet deep or more.
So it is back in the, the back 60%?
We delineated the, or we, SW Coal delineated the wetlands to like 1,200 feet from the road. And that stream is like at least 2,000 if not 2,500 feet from the road. You know, we're, we're way over 1,000 feet away from that stream.
So describe to me why the fish and wildlife has to be brought into the...
I mean, in the, in the report that was prepared by SW Coal, they recommended that they be contacted. So, and I mean...
To be made aware of the development?
Yes. And, I mean, to give them, what I think their concern was is in the event that they didn't know the scope of the project at the time, how much wetland might be impacted or anything like that. So, I mean, I think that's more like standard language. But, I mean, it doesn't hurt to go ahead and just get a comment from them. They, they, I mean, from my experience, U.S. Fish and Wildlife is concerned when there is activity in the stream or near the stream channel. But just, we'll make them aware of it and, you know, make sure that they're fine with it.
So basically, from where I stand, they kind of flagged the resources, the resource so that the, the people they prepared to report for, know it's there. That brings me, if I may, to stormwater and the fact that if there are streams, those should have been also highlighted somewhere on the plan. The applicant is seeking a waiver for quantity of stormwater. So in the, so what he's doing for quality, just so we're clear, he's talking about phosphorus because the project is in the watershed of a great pond. So instead of doing quality control using the general standards, they are using phosphorus loading. So a lake can only take so much pounds of phosphorus per year depending on the depth and the flushing rate and other values of a lake. And the applicant needs to do some calculations per DEP tables that show that there's enough undisturbed area that will actually bind that phosphorus and therefore he's not, the project is not exceeding that phosphorus loading. So the applicant has done that. The applicant is seeking a waiver for quantity, which we have not done yet. The reason behind it, I think, is very interesting and is worth a lot of consideration is the idea is we have provided waiver provision if you go directly into a big container. So if a project is happening on the shore of a lake, you're saying, you know what? Do quality, but let it go because that lake is not going to flood for the amount of added stormwater you are providing. In this case, he's not going directly into a lake, but he's going into a fairly large wetland in the back. So the idea of the question is, does the wetland have the capacity to take that water? And is anybody impacted or could be impacted downstream from that property? What I want to stress is that Andrew has not provided that information. He has not shown the catchment in the subcatchment areas showing that that water is actually staying at that property for the most part. There could be some minimal amount somewhere else, but the vast majority, because he's having an increase between pre-imposed, so the idea is that that water, he needs to demonstrate, it says Burton, to prove that the water is going to be sent toward a recipient, meaning this, a wetland that has enough capacity to take that, that water. And you need to make a determination eventually that the waiver is to be granted for the waiver provisions that we have in Article 6. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. The, from my point of view, what is not there yet is we have some information on quantity, but we don't have information that that water, per the grades, the existing grades and any other streams that they may be on that property that is, goes to that water.
Now, the wetland is in the north of the section. North is everything, right?
The wetland floats towards, is on, I would say, north or west? East, east.
East in here? I thought this was the forest and that's where all the water's going to go.
Look at your inset map.
And there's no wetland here. Wetland is here.
The wetland's further back.
Oh, further back here?
Yeah.
I would estimate that the wetland is at least over a quarter mile away.
Away?
You can see, there's two plans.
Go to Bosley Brook or whatever.
There's a plan, there's a plan that shows the entire property, but it did not show all the natural resources or features on that property.
But isn't the also disturbing wetland like right here?
So that is going to go the quarter mile because the slope of the land.
The question I have for the applicant
Yes.
is the, sort of the distribution of your runoff compared to how it happens right now. And to Michelle's point, I guess the adjacent properties, I'd be interested in finding out how much of that increase goes in that direction or is the plan really, the way the level spreaders are set and the basins, does this discharge into this sloping area of this property and then just run downhill towards the stream? I'm assuming that that small wetland disturbance area, you're not channeling any more runoff in that direction?
No. The, and if I could just go to the, and I realize that I haven't provided you with a plan yet that shows the two subcatchments pre-development or I've given you a summary of calculations and I included three sets of calculations, quantity calculations. For subcatchment, what I call subcatchment one, which is the area that drains to the level spreader toward the south, toward the south, that level spreader. The post-development peak is less than the pre-development peak.
Okay.
Now, the... So even though I haven't, I am using these underdrained soil filters as quality treatment, there is attenuation, even in, even though I haven't oversized them for excess storage. The level spreader toward, or the level spreader north or, no, I'm sorry, east of the, east of the ice skating rink. Right now, during the 2.7-inch rainfall event, I'm way below, post-development, I'm way below pre-development peak flow. During the 5.4-inch rain event, I'm at 4.02 versus 3.88. So I'm, I'm within, what, 2/10th? Or no, a little over a tenth, 0.15. So, and to be, and to follow that up, as far as a rule of thumb that we have used in design for quite a number of years is that level spreader should be designed for 0.25 CFS per foot, per foot of length. So I propose two 25-foot-long level spreaders. So even during the... So even during the five-point-four-inch event, they're adequate, they're of adequate length to handle that peak flow. So, there, and, and no, I haven't done a good enough job necessarily showing where this water is going at this point. There is a wetland that is east, that is east of this level spreader toward the southerly property line. There is a wetland about maybe five hundred feet below it.
Which, which level spreader are you referring to?
The one toward the southerly line.
How many, how many level spreaders are there?
Two.
Okay.
There's one toward the northerly line and one toward the southerly line.
It is two wi- large wetland complexes.
There are, there's-
One here and-
There's one.
One we see.
That's what we're missing.
No, we're missing the other one that we don't see.
Yep, okay, so it's only those two.
So, yes.
I'm wondering whether it wouldn't make more sense to defer this narration to next time because that's when we will actually take action on the waiver and so forth.
That's fine, that's fine, then I'll have a plan that's clear to you and, and we're not-
Right, because-
I just want to add that, uh, he came with the idea and I thought it was a great idea. We had never considered wetlands and be able to take the water, but then a lot of them are able to. And I think that we are trying to avoid unnecessary ponds, so it's, if this can work, it'd be a good idea, so. And maybe something to think for the future.
Yeah, and I have no problem with this, you just need to demonstrate-
No, and it's easier if, if we have a plan that shows it.
I have a little other question, which has nothing to do with waste water or surface drainage. There's a proposed bridge to get to the ice skating rink. If you're in a wheelchair, can you negotiate that?
There's also a, um, on the plan, if you will, there is also a looping, I'll call, I'll call it a driveway or a pathway that's eight or ten feet wide.
Okay.
That is gravel, that is at five percent slope, that meets the ADA standard. Okay? Because, yeah, when we looked at that, at the, at the end of, or beyond that bridge, there's a set of steps down. And so, um, we also have provided a separate pathway that is ADA compliant.
Other questions?
The application itself, there's just one, the, the applicant, the rest of these are all copies of that. So if a change was made on that application to strike out the word motocross, that would be-
It's just going to be submit an application with the right word.
Yeah, I mean-
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Can I go through the, the memo before Daryl asks him the questions? Can you ask Daryl?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, but I think it pertains to next meeting.
What?
I think it pertains to the next meeting rather than this.
Well, I'm just going to say that the parking circulation and emergency response bullets are still valid, that's not been addressed. Stormwater has not been addressed. The well has been addressed, the landscaping has not been addressed, and on the wildlife still needs to be addressed. And the legend on the general, really, really need legend, so.
Oh, for the line styles and things like that, I, okay, I'll-
So, and we knew about the lighting plan that was missing, but I forget, guess the note ended up coming off this TRT and was not meant to come off.
One comment I have to assist the applicant on the, the land salmon, Union River's not considered a land salmon watershed and with its two dams, so there's some information to carry forward. I'd still contact them, but-
Yeah.
So, on the subject of completeness of the application for tonight-
Completeness of preliminary, yes.
What other things are?
Well, completeness doesn't have to mean that they're acceptable.
We're looking for missing items.
Right.
And one of them appears to be landscaping, if I understand your note correctly?
Well, he provided land, he provided landscaping, it's just these, most of them are, John is right, they should be provided probably at the end. What's missing definitely for completeness in terms of what was not submitted is the stormwater. I mean, in terms of it was submitted, but it was incomplete.
Yeah, but-
That's a quali, correct, I, yes, John.
But we haven't.
Quantity waiver.
I think you're-
So you've submitted for the waiver. Catchment areas, so you want catchman area calculations, is that what you want?
We want some, we want a, a, a pre-post arrow flows showing catchment and some catchment areas.
Okay.
A site plan that shows pre and post-development, subcatchments.
But John is correct in terms of the information is all there, in terms of it may not be com-
It may not be the informa- all the information we want, but it is there and this is the opportunity to say, but we need more, rather than next meeting, in which case, there's a meeting after that.
I think for the purposes of the next meeting, I think we would be interested in having some proof that the fish and wildlife were, were contacted. But I think that would be one thing that we would make some sort of condition on. The other thing that would be a condition of approval, unless it's solidified between now and then, would be the, the fire inspector's concerns about circulation and you mentioned the state fire marshal's office. Those things would, would be conditional, probably through Dwight, I would think, that-
The state fire, or, I mean, I guess, to put words, and I try not to put words in your mouth, the state fire marshal approval will be ultimately, I mean, typically coordinated through Dwight. I mean, if, I'm okay with it being a condition of the, of, on the plan, that it's, that the plan has to be reviewed and approved before the building permit is issued.
Yes.
But I mean, that's not really where we bring back a plan to you that we say, okay, we've got our fire marshal plan, that will be through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Especially since you don't have final plans.
I mean, we're not, right, we don't have a final plan, you know, we're going to be further along by the time I resubmit this information, you know, to know where probably doorways are and lights need to be at those doorways. But as far as having a fire marshal approval-
I'm not really asking for that, it's just that I, I want to make sure that that's part of, you know, the condition of the approval.
Yeah.
And the same thing with the lighting plan, once you get it solidified, we're going to expect to see, you know, something that we can say, yes, this is the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, it meets those.
Yeah.
What else would we ask them for in final?
I could just say, as far as the fire, state fire marshal's approval, if their building plans don't get that, it's not being built.
Okay, so-
That's sort of their problem. We're saying, yes, this use is allowed, their plans conform with the Alsworth ordinances. And if the state fire marshal doesn't like it, you know, they can't do it.
They'll never get a permit for it.
We don't worry about that.
Okay, all right.
The, um, Mike has requested that they be turning radius templates. We did not have that yet, right, Carl?
Nope.
So, in the, it can be a separate sheet, but it needs to be just not radius, but actually template. So we, it can clearly demonstrate that the trucks can take the turns.
And you said that you were working on that with the layout of the parking lot?
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, if we end up losing, again, like, if we end up losing three or four spaces, it's not going to be a big deal. We more than meet the standards for parking.
Okay.
But what I will most likely do is, um, you know, sit down with Mike either in his office or in my office and we'll lay the template on and see how it works and adjust to suit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll be looking for that next time.
Yeah.
To be completed.
Parking table two, just so I may explain. So he had the restaurant had, um, parking sta- the parking space is stipulated in the ordinance. When the parking space, when there's no use stipulated that is the right use or is a use that is similar in impact, then basically it becomes we use, um, um, IT handbooks and, and things like this. The thing with that one is, as Andrew said, is that it didn't match the use, it was like for sites that were not comparable. I did my research, Andrew did some research, we came to the same conclusion, I think he was comfortable. But he needs a table on the map that says how many requirements per ordinance and how many were kind of negotiated. So we know how many were provided and how many he needs to keep, so that needs to be-
So, so you need more than what's on the bottom there?
Did you put a table? Yes. You need to explain it, because you said required, they were, they were required, some of them were required, some of them were agreed upon. So I think that's important to break down the-
And that detail's in the application, right?
It is, it's narrated out.
She's just asking for that to come out onto the plan?
That's a, as we asked this in the ordinance. Plus he needs a, a note at the entrances that said that they will be paid for thirty feet, the first thirty feet need to be paid.
We'll, we'll hash that in and show that, note that.
Okay. Definitely a legend. Did I say that already?
Uh-huh.
I'll try to not say it again.
And make it a good legend, that's beautiful.
I think the point of the application, Michelle, in the TRT notes, the report on the wildlife, the folks, the report mentions a hundred-foot no-cut buffer around a certain stream.
We don't know where the, we don't know where the streams are because they weren't provided, so I just, what happens is, I'm not saying these are applicable or not, I'm saying that he provided us a report, which there were two flags that were shown in the conclusion. There was one flag, it was the salmon habitat, and the second flag was that a hundred-foot no-cut buffer. Usually it's, it's a seven, again, I was just like, so my question is, so two things have been brought up. So what's the story on this, where they are, demonstrate to the planning board that there's no issues? So I don't think there's an issue. I'm just saying that
My understanding is that it's far outside the development area and deal with that at such time as development takes place back there.
Because the loop needs to be finished on that.
You want those delineated, is that what you're saying?
No, I just want Andrew to state why there's no issues with these two things. The project is too far, the, the stream is, it, it just needs to be finished, it needs to be concluded. If that wasn't in that conclusion, then it wouldn't have been in that conclusion, but it's right there.
Evidence for the, the waiver, to support the waiver, I guess, would be-
Yeah.
Critical. I guess we'll talk about the waiver when it comes, yeah, I, I would say some stuff now, but we'll hold off on that.
No, go ahead.
We don't have the evidence to support the waiver yet.
So there, there's a lot of old logging trails on this property that go down to that whole thing and it's all forested? Are the roads even used for anything now? Do people walk on them? Have vehicles been on them at all?
Vehicles haven't been on them for a period of time, I mean, they haven't, you know, I'm, once, I'm sure that Jay and Kathy live there, they will, they will lock on that one.
Are they passable by vehicle?
Not at this point, no.
Okay, fine, just try to understand the lay of the land there. It seems fairly rustic. That's a good word. Okay. Oh, the dumpster, are the dumpsters screened? I wasn't able to-
Yes, yeah, it's noted that they, they will be screened.
I'm thinking I'm going to make a motion.
No, 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 stop, public hearing.
Oh, I am not going to make a motion right now.
Yeah. This is a public hearing, anyone may comment on this matter. Before doing so, I ask that you be recognized by the chair when you go up to the lectern and state your concerns. Does anyone wish to speak? Yes, sir. And, oh, yes, state your name for the record, please.
My name is Dan Owens, my property is theirs.
Yes.
I had a couple of questions. One, is that a one-story building or two-story building?
One story and then a full basement.
And the, uh, there's a proprietary restaurant in there, what is the seating capacity?
We, we planned for forty.
Okay. It also noted that there would be some nighttime entertainment, and what would be the capacity for that?
Andrew, you need to come up, listen to what I'm saying, sorry. I'm the big guardian of the minutes.
We'll share the microphone.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. One other question I have is the, uh, it was noted, I believe, in one of the newspapers, I'm not sure which one, in the summer when there would not be any ice skating, it's potentially a venue for outside entertainment.
There is no plan on the table for using that as an outdoor venue.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions from the public?
Oh, I had one.
Okay.
What is the, uh, from the property line that's shown there, what, what's the nearest that building's going to be to the property line?
About three hundred feet.
That's quite a long.
Okay.
Well, this one too, I guess. We've got two buildings, but yeah.
Don't you have to copy it, okay?
Yeah.
You want to copy this? Um, you can have it, you can have it, it's here.
Any other questions from the public? Do you need a few minutes there?
Yeah, one second.
Okay.
Here's another.
So if I were to make a motion, they don't think that there would be any conditions or stipulations that were discussed?
I think that it would, no.
Okay.
They'll come back to the issue.
But I don't need to give them that list again during the motion. I, I don't. Because I scribbled some things down, but then I- There is that problem.
Is this, is this the path that he was talking about? Two, for handicapped people, to come down here? He hasn't, I couldn't, it isn't labeled anywhere.
We're good.
Thank you. In that case, since there was no more public comment, I will close the public hearing and Mr. Wilson, I believe, has a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the preliminary plan for major use site development entitled Jay's Pit Stop and the Backford Sporting Center for J and M, Kathy Gibbs, this proposal to construct a square foot, thirty-two-hundred-square-foot building for use as a restaurant and a residence, as well as a pad for an ice skating rink and a skateboard park, four-point-nine acres on fifty-nine-point-two acres, tax map eighty-four, lot five, on the Bangor Road, in the rural zone. We, um, we find that this isn't allowed use in the rural zone. And the application is complete in terms of the submission materials, um, per the articles, with the exception of the items that we noted during the discussion, such as landscaping, the stormwater, fire department radiuses, and an accurate lighting plan based on the building design. Other items that we discussed, the wildlife and the, um, general legend and bar scale on the map. And so, so that is the motion, that it isn't allowed use and the submission is complete with those other, with the addition of those items.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Is there discussion? Are there none, all in favor, please? Thank you. Are there my last to sign?
There are.
That would have us adjourned, so perhaps we could have a motion that once we are finished, all of us signing, that we will stand adjourned.
So moved. So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, all in favor? That one we didn't have.